I would like to call to order the Tuesday, March 3 meeting of the Monmouth City Council. And we'll call, please, Silas.
Counselor Belz.
Here.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Sharmar.
Here.
Counselor Schinkel.
Here.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Here.
Mayor Coontz.
I am here, and if you could lead us in the flag. So Counselor Belz.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And this evening, I'd like to note that we have a few agenda items, including a couple of executive sessions. So before we get to the consent calendar, I think tonight we'll go ahead and do our regular council meeting here, and then switch hats. We have a regular meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency, then repair to the back, and do our council work session, which tonight comprised is comprised of doing some more work on our council goals and priorities for 2021. Then go into executive session as an urban renewal agency, come out of that, adjourn that, and we have a brief executive session in council. And I'll say, I'll read these statements as we prepare later, but the council will meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing performance evaluation of public officers and employees held pursuant to ORS 192662i. And I will read that full script later. The Urban Renewal Agency will meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing real property transaction. That is held pursuant to ORS 192662e. And we'll read that full script later as well. So at tonight, we have, we do have an opportunity for citizen comments, so if anyone has comment to make before the council, we will take those comments. There are forms back there to give to our city recorder. Public comments in this form are limited to three minutes. The council will typically not respond, but could direct city staff to respond, or we will reach out later with more information. So our consent calendar consists of the minutes of our last short council meeting. That was the evening of February 18. And I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I move approval of minutes for February 18.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselor Silbernagle and seconded by Counselor Belz. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have a correction.
Thank you. What is that?
Under citizen, not citizen, under community announcements for the regular meeting of last, last February 18, Ramon Martinez will be taking over as the president of the Rotary Club. He will not be the grand marshal of the parade, as far as I know. So all you good people out there, if you know somebody who'd be a great grand marshal, just let me know.
That is yet to be determined, eh?
Yet to be determined.
All right. Well, we will certainly look forward to that with that correction. All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That is passed unanimously. Starting out with the mayor's report, and I don't have a lot to report tonight. We have obviously all been busy, but we have a lot to get through tonight, so I will delay any information. You did receive an appointment for the senior advisory board, but unfortunately, our thorough city recorder found that that applicant lives outside the city limits. Each border commission can have one member who does reside outside the city limits. And the last person we appointed to the senior advisory board, Dr. Melissa Cannon from Western actually lives outside the city limits. So we have to let Mr. Mullenbrecht know, Brant, know that we can, we would certainly encourage him to join the Friends Board and continue the work he is already doing volunteering at the senior center, but we still have an opening on the senior advisory board. So let's, let's, speaking of the senior advisory board, I'm going to go a little out of order here. So Counselor Sharmar, do you have a report for us?
All right, yes. The senior advisory board met on the 25th of February, and the first and most important announcement is that the best $6 breakfast in town is coming up on Saturday at 8:30 with mounds of fluffy scrambled eggs and sausage and biscuits and gravy and bacon and orange juice and all that wonderful stuff. 8:30 at the senior center. They are going to be providing some SNAP education, and this doesn't mean fast education. It means education on the supplemental nutrition assistance program because the federal government is making some changes in that, and a lot of seniors receive SNAP benefits and need to know about those changes. The Meals on Wheels will be meeting, will be serving meals on Monday and Wednesday now instead of Tuesday and Thursday. They have a lot of travel coming up, which sounds like a lot of fun. They're going to Crater Lake, they're going to the gorge, to the Hood River Blossom Festival, and to Grants Pass for a two to three night jet boat excursion extravaganza. Their soup and pie event will not be on pie day. It will be on the 19th instead. Sorry to be a little bit geeky here.
Is that soup day?
Soup and pie day will not be on pie day. It will be on the 19th, and I'll be bringing a plum pie.
Ooh.
I will be making the pie, and someone else here in the room provided the plums, and shall not be mentioned. There'll be a Victorian tea in April, and they are still working on accreditation.
That's.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. So Counselor Carey, our planning commission.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the planning commission has not met, they did not meet on February 19, as I think I announced last time, and the meeting originally scheduled for tomorrow night has been canceled. So there's really no, no report, other than what we're going to have before us.
We have an issue before us tonight. Yes, thank you. Counselor Silbernagle, our tree board.
Yeah, tree board has not met either, and we're still down a couple of members. So if there are people that are interested in the tree board, please fill out an application.
Because their busy time is coming up.
It is.
Our busy day is coming upon us soon. Counselor Lopez, MyNet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. MyNet also did not meet in February, but I have a, I have a couple important dates to keep on, on the radar. We will be doing our regular meeting on the 26th of March at 7:30 in the morning at the MyNet building. We are also putting together plans for our annual steering session on Saturday, the 28th of March, and that, that tentatively will be held here.
Oh, great. Okay. Thank you. And do we have any community announcements, either from the floor or here? Then we'll go right into our city manager report. Mr. Olson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. So first, you'll see last week I sent out the city manager report for February, so that would be something that you would, from here on out, see typically in your packet for the first meeting of the month, as kind of this is the report, so it gets kind of officially entered into the record. Then in addition to that, so the March 8 is the first review date for Prothman, and I do believe that the mayor wants to have some discussion about the interview panels and the meet and greet, so just.
Do that during work session, yeah.
And there were two things last week. One was the second community meeting for the city hall project with FFA. That was a, you know, I thought it was a good turnout for that project. They talked about two options, the block option and the L option. Today I got feedback from the architect that the, that what they found was that the, the public comments and then certainly from staff tend to favor the L, the L option. So unless they hear otherwise, they're going to proceed with that for their design. And, you know, we could bring that back to the council if you wanted to have a touch before we told them to move forward with the L option, but they were going to do that unless they hear otherwise.
I, I heard raving comments about the L option. That was definitely not just a slight favor, but actually folks that I talked to in attendance really favored that. That was my personal favorite.
Yeah. That was the, I think generally that was everything I've heard. That was the, the consensus was for the L shape. So I'll just, I'll proceed with that. Also, and, oh, I, they were looking to schedule a, the third public meeting, so that would be in April 21st or 22nd.
22nd.
22nd, thank you. I didn't make a note, so tentatively, that's what we have now. I know the council has some, you know, you're jammed up with some meetings between the end of March and the first week, two weeks in April, so I probably will circle back to the council and say, do you, do you want an extra week, kind of just to catch your breath?
So that was Wednesday, the 22nd.
The 22nd.
Okay.
And then also last week was the Stormwater Utilities Open House, which again, while I was there for just a brief part at the beginning of that, it seemed to be well attended, good comments, good feedback. And Russ told me, the public works director, that there was, it was like that the entire time, so it was a good turnout. And now, of course, pizza and beer is always a good, you know. So when you're working on your community engagement strategy.
We get it.
Public Works Building, the remodel is currently underway, and they are working out of temporary housing. There's a joint city council meeting with Independence on March 30th at 6 o'clock at the Fire District Building, and the mayors of the two communities are going to meet next week for, to talk about the agenda. And then I will just finish with the coronavirus discussion, if there's any questions. So the city is currently kind of just working up towards that. Everybody gets a bottle of sanitizer. So we're researching the sites. I think the way staff talked about it is to have, the city, of course, isn't a health agency or anything like that, but we can be a communication link, so we can have a landing area for, with links to the CDC, to Oregon Health Authority, things like that, plus make sure that anything else, that there's a way for the public and, and we reach out through Facebook or the community and all things like that to let people know that if you're looking for information, we have some information that will basically redirect you to other sites to ensure that there's credible information that, you know, they have somewhere to go that is, is credible. Then internally, we're, we're talking about it from a staff training standpoint, plus finance. We had discussion about just general maintenance, things that you do with increased wipe downs and things like that. So it's, it's in our, we're, we're, we're on it, but of course, this is, you know, it's ramping up and will continue to do so probably over the next, you know, four to eight weeks or whatever it takes for this thing to, to run its course, maybe longer than that. But we're, it is something that is a priority with us.
Did, did you get the invitation to meet tomorrow?
Yeah.
With community partners?
Yep. So Woo is hosting a community partners, uh, meeting, conference, something like that, where they're bringing in resources and so that the community partners can talk about the different strategies. I'm assuming that's what it.
Right. Basically, what kind of assets we bring to this and what different people's plans are. I know, I mean, our, our police department and Western have a longstanding history of mutual aid, and, and we have disaster recovery plans. For example, an emergency operations plans that include each other in various ways. But just in, in this instance, with the school district, particularly in the university, and I'll be there, wearing my school district hat, thought a, a good opportunity just to visit and say, make sure we all understand how we're communicating and what we need to do, so.
Yeah.
Tomorrow.
You know.
Yes, sir.
Part of that might be, and I don't know that it's, that it's too, you know, too severe, but it may be worth some consideration to identifying what services are truly essential and what may need to be delivered remotely.
Yes.
The universities, that'll be part of what they talk about tomorrow. You know, how do you, you know, if you can't come in to pay your bill and just to make sure that that.
No, and that's correct. The work from home strategy is something we'll be talking about, and of course, for customers, there's ways to pay online. So there's, there is, is, you know, I'm going to be the test, the guinea pig for the work at home project.
[laughter]
We will have, we will have that discussion. There was, oh, there was something else I was going to mention that you kind of reminded me of, but there's a variety of things. One thing that popped up internally that we did talk about at staff level was what happens when people are out sick, because of course, we're, if, if you're sick, stay home. We don't want you to come in. If you come in, we're going to send you home. But what happens if they don't have sufficient leave? Kind of my directions to staff is that they stay home, we'll work it out later. I'm not personally a fan of having people take, leave without pay, so possibly we would be advancing some sick leave to just cover that period of time. So, I mean, that's, I'm one of those folks. I, I don't want people to go on leave without pay. It could affect their benefits and things like that, so we would work our way through it with the, so that, you know, has to do with the work from home type thing.
But also, again, with a super small staff, if you have two or three people out when it's, it's the end of the month or time to process utility payments or something like that, I mean, that's the kind of backups we need to think about, where some of that cannot be done remotely, or you have three or four people out sick, how do you get those things done, so.
Yeah, thank you. I'll make sure to talk to Janet about that.
Yeah.
One more question regarding the, the city hall plans and the, you know, the preferred, seemingly the preferred L option, was there, did they get many comments regarding the, the setback that is currently contemplated, you know, in the Main Street district? That's, that's, I believe it's like a 10-foot setback. Current city hall is further than that. It's more set further back than that. But myself and other people that I talked to were a little concerned about, even with the L shape, that close sort of, you know, two stories with a facade on it, you know, might it be attractive, or might there be a little better option to move it back a ways, create a little bit more of a plaza sort of, I mean, I'm not talking 10 feet, but, but something, so it's not quite hard on the, the sidewalk.
Because of the, just, it'll be a bigger building.
A br-.
A block portion.
Right. So I'll take that comment and relay it over to the architects.
And if I'm the only one on that, then, then don't, but there seemed to be some conversation around that that may or may not have gotten traction, but.
Okay.
Again, I think it would be worth a discussion.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll mention that, circle back at some point, maybe in a Friday tidbits or something, I'll let you know.
Thank you. Good. Anything else? Yes?
I just want to make sure, because I might have misunderstood. I think when you said about the joint council meeting, I think you said it was 6 o'clock. In our packet here, it says 6:30. So which is it?
It has to be 6:30 because they're doing a blood drive in there beforehand.
Right. Okay, thank you. So it's 6:30.
I apologize for that.
That's fine. I just want to make sure I had it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And this evening, we have a presentation from WAVE broadband, and Chad, if you want to give a little introduction here on this.
So the city of Monmouth, like a lot of cities in Oregon and the Willamette Valley, five years ago, Astound Broadband, AKA WAVE, came in and basically were constructing a lot of infrastructure up and down the, you know, for me, we negotiated the exact same franchise five years ago with WAVE that you did, and by and large, it was installing the backbone, as I would characterize it, up and down the Highway 99 corridor. I'm not, I'm not sure how far south and how far north it went, but there was, they were doing this, basically penetration into the Oregon market. It's primarily for high-speed internet. And, and we never had, in Carlton, we never had any issues with, with WAVE with the, once you get, and, and actually negotiating the franchise agreement was super easy. I would presume that it was probably pretty easy here, too. After that, really didn't have a lot of conversation with WAVE, other than once a year, we would get our $5,000 check for our franchise, franchise payment. And at least with the city of Monmouth, the franchise agreement five years ago was written without a renewal clause in it, so it was a hard stop at five years. It will expire with, sometime in April. So they contacted the city about renewing for five years under the same terms and conditions that are currently there. Checked with Public Works, Power and Light, and the city staff, and there's, they have no issues with the, so, because there's the joint poll agreements and things like that, there hasn't been any issues as far as construction goes. As far as I know, there isn't any individual customers in the city of Monmouth. I'll, guests talked to that, although the library did, the library director told me that there's some agreement, intergovernmental agreement or whatever, that they have for provision of internet service, that they do, somehow it comes through that with the drop, and, you know, that's, if you want more on that one, I'll get it and report back. But other than that, WAVE is here to kind of just give you, and I asked them to be quick, you know, not to spend too much time, especially tonight.
I don't know how to talk, you know that.
[laughter] Quick.
I said, I told them, I said, just say every third word of whatever plans, speech you have.
I can be as brief for as long as you guys need.
But in particular, I asked them to do kind of a five-year recap of what's gone on during the past five years, and then a five-year forecast of what they envision over the next five years.
Just, just for background, Ford Institute Leadership Program, South Lincoln County, meet Ford Institute Leadership Program, Columbia County, and Carlton, Yam Hill, and Monmouth Independence, so.
Awesome. Awesome. Thanks for the invite.
That's how I know Matt.
So my name is Matt Upton Kelder. I'm based out of Newport. I am the senior director of an organization in WAVE called CPM, which is Construction Project Management. So sales goes out, sells something, goes into the sales engineering group, they get all the approvals that need to happen, they send it to us, and they say, here, go build this. So my org is in charge of Southern Washington, from about Ridgefield South, all the way across to Idaho on the Washington border, and then basically all the way south through Oregon to Northern California. So I've got Eureka and Crescent City, two kind of small islands, but for the most part, I'm Oregon. So I started my life on the coast. I'm born and raised in Newport. Grandfather was the mayor, dad was on city council, so I've been there for a long time. My dad started a company called Coastcom in 2007-ish. We were sold to WAVE in 2016, so in 2017, my job function shifted, and I moved over to the construction side of the business, which I'd kind of been in anyway, because when they purchased Coastcom, they also purchased all of our construction assets. So I've known MyNet for a long time. We met with the original CEO a long time ago. We piloted a, a hosted voice platform through MyNet. Anyway, so we've got a lot of ties to the kind of telecom industry in Oregon. So from a WAVE standpoint, WAVE was purchased in 2017 by a company called RCN, so we are now part of an RCN Grande Wave, larger family. We've just, we've got just short of a million customers and we're the sixth largest cable provider in the United States. So there's two distinct businesses that we run. One is the Hybrid Fiber Coax, the HFC Network, which is basically your cable TV, typical charter Comcast-type business unit. And then we've got our basically Enterprise Fiber Group. I'm very heavily involved, the Enterprise Fiber Group, not much on the coax side. We have some coax islands in Oregon. Coax is not our primary focus in the Oregon market, and the reason why we have these coax pockets is because of companies that WAVE has purchased throughout the years. So we've got, like, we do Depot Bay randomly, so we've all of Depot Bay, and we are the only coax provider in Depot Bay. We've got Sallett's, which is another one of those kind of random places, not in Newport, but in South Beach. We have just this little pocket of coax. It's, we, I don't have a lot to do with that. What we've done over the last five years from a, from a fiber standpoint is we're very heavily involved in the submarine cable industry. So everybody's probably read about the Facebook project on Tierra del Mar. That's our project. So I'm heavily involved with that. The, the system provider brings the cable onto shore, puts it in a big vault called Beach Manhole, and then from the Beach Manhole, they run power and fiber to a cable landing station, and then from the cable landing station, it's me. So I take all the data that lands on the West Coast of the United States, and I take it to Hillsborough, and I drop it off at one of the six data centers that's on our data center ring. So a lot of our fiber expansion has been kind of based around that, that submarine backhaul and from the beach into Hillsborough. Hillsborough is a crazy market right now. We're building a lot of stuff in Hillsborough. And then, you know, that's kind of given us the ability to expand our fiber footprint. And then the reason why we have built so much in Monmouth over the last five years is all based on cellular backhaul. So we have, we have relationships with T-Mobile, we have relationships with Sprint, we have relationships with Verizon and AT&amp;T, and we get these RFPs that are 250 sites, and they could be, you know, from Salem to Monmouth to, you know, Hillsborough down to Medford. You know, we have no idea where they are, and we get them in batches, and we win them in batches. So when we win ones that we can't get to, like, we have one, we have a T-Mobile site in, in Monmouth that we lease fiber from MyNet to get to, because they already have the fiber, so why would we build it? You know, we're, we're not in the business to compete at the residential level, we're not in the business to compete really at the small and medium business level. I mean, I guess we're kind of competing with MyNet on the enterprise side, but we've got very few customers in Monmouth. The Community College is one. I know we have something with the library. Somebody tried to explain it to me on my way over here, but I didn't understand it. It was something about the intergovernmental, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know the background of that.
C, C, R, L, S, Chris? Yes. So the, the Regional Library Association, that's all the Chameca de Region libraries.
Okay. Okay. So, you know, let's see, next five years, we still haven't figured out fiber to the home yet. We'd like to say that we know how to do fiber to the home profitably, but we can't. So I would say that that's coming at some point for us, and, you know, obviously, we would target those markets where the competition is nil, you know? We don't really want to go fiber to the home versus fiber to the home. It'd be easier for us to do something else somewhere else. Operations in Monmouth have gone over. I have no issues with the city, we have no issues with anything whatsoever. It's just kind of a quiet little corner of our market. You know, we continue to deliver, sell backhaul. I don't see us hiring a bunch of salespeople to come and, and compete in Monmouth. You know, we, we provide the backhaul to MyNet, so all of the internet activity that happens on the MyNet network comes back, and we take it up to the Weston, and we drop it off to the Internet at Large. So it wouldn't behoove us to come in and start competing with the guy who's buying the internet from us. You're on a, I think, a six-gig commit right now, upgrading to a 20-gig commit, which is a lot of internet. So, you know, in this particular market, we are happy to be the wholesale provider, but as such, because we have fiber in the right of way, you know, we're here requesting an extension of the franchise agreement.
All right. Questions?
I could talk all night long, so.
Any questions about that?
I think you're a good partner.
Cool. We're happy to be here. Yep.
So what will be required?
So what will be required to extend the agreement? Do we need a?
An ordinance.
An ordinance, okay. So that wouldn't be tonight, I presume?
No, no. Tonight was to just bring the parties together and have you kind of do a review. Next meeting would be first reading. We'll take a look at the schedule and, because without an emergency, you go first reading, second reading, adoption, then 30 days afterwards. That, it would be probably a couple weeks. It would, you know, it wouldn't have perfect overlap, so we would just work to accommodate that.
If this is, if this is five years old, it might be worth revisiting what we've done, you know, with other franchise fees, shared polls, that sort of thing, to make sure that, you know, the new agreement is in line with others that we may have recently renewed.
This is kind of unique. I don't know that we have an agreement with others like this one, doing the back hall.
Yeah, I don't.
Other franchises are with providers, basically providing service to the home.
Is this agreement, and it's difficult to speak intelligently without reading the agreement, is this agreement specific to that back hall activity?
There's a trigger if they, and I, yeah, there's a trigger if they achieve a certain level of revenue from service to customers, then it kicks into a more standard kind of franchise. Otherwise, I think it's a flat $5,000 a year.
It's 5% or five grand, whichever's higher.
Yeah, that's right.
And, you know, I don't think we'll ever hit the five grand or the 5% trigger, but.
Gotcha.
What's a back hall?
So, so we are the provider to the provider. So the.
But that's not MyNet.
Yes.
It is MyNet.
MyNet is the eyeball provider, so they build out to the eyes that are watching Netflix and all that stuff. And then they aggregate all that data back to the MyNet headquarters, and then they dump it out of my network, and I take it to San Jose. I take it to the Weston in Seattle. I take it to wherever it needs to go. So that's the back hall piece. So the front hall is from, basically from the head end out to each one of the houses, and then it aggregates into a big funnel, and it dumps onto my network, and I take it wherever it needs to go across the nation or the world.
Why does MyNet information data need to go out into the world?
Well, it's internet activity. So anybody that buys an internet connection from MyNet that wants to go to Google, and the Google data center is in China, I take it to China, or I take it to somebody who takes it to China.
Okay. I heard there was some sort of concern with that cable coming, transatlantic cable coming in through.
Tierra del Mar, Astoria.
Yeah. How's that, what's happening with that?
We, the Facebook project was awarded the conditional use permit from Tillamook County, so they are pressing forward with the installation of the cable. There's a very short construction window where the shore boring, it's basically where they bring in a big drill, and they go underneath, and they bore a casing in to bring the cable in. So that, that particular construction piece is happening on a residential piece of property, and the neighborhood had concerns about the construction activity, what it's going to look like, what it got, when it got done. The biggest concern was nobody told anybody about it. It just showed up. But in the world of submarine cables, everything's a secret until it's announced. So there's, you know, I can see both sides of the equation. It wasn't handled very well on the front end, but the reality of the type of construction they're performing, there shouldn't be an issue with anybody's property. And once they get done, you won't even know it's there, because there's no building, there's no nothing. It's just a manhole buried in the middle of a piece of property.
So the residents are okay with it now?
No.
No? Okay, okay.
I like your candor.
Yes, thank you. Don't keep secrets.
Well, I mean, you know, it's, it just, I don't think it was handled very well on both sides. So it's, it's easy to see both sides of the equation, but neither side is happy.
There's a lot of that going around. Thanks. Can you spell your name for me?
Yeah, it's U.P.
U.P.
D.E.N.
D.E.N.
K.E.L.
K.E.L.
D.E.R.
Kelder, okay. Upton Kelder.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you for coming to do that. So we didn't just see a piece of paper and actually getting some more information about that and seeing your lovely face.
Good to see you again.
Safe travels if you're going back home tonight.
I am, yep.
Drive careful.
He's used to that.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So this is a chance for citizen comments. Did we have anything, Phyllis? Any citizen comments? Then we will move along to our business agenda. We have two items this evening, and it looks like, first of all, we get to hear from our Lieutenant Isaiah Haynes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Isaiah Haynes, I'm here from the Police Department, and I'm here to review the 2020 Annual Liquor License Renewals with you. There's a table in the staff report, and there is 18 establishments here in Monmouth that have liquor licenses. In fact, there is one that has two licenses, so there's 19 licenses that are up for renewal. Each year, the city of Monmouth has the option to make a recommendation, and those recommendations are for either approval or denial of the licenses. Previously, the council has recommended approval of our liquor license for each of the above-mentioned businesses. The background in this case is pretty straightforward, for the most part. Fifteen of the 18 establishments had no police-related responses in regards to alcohol or any of those type of violations. And there was three that had some police responses, and that was Main Street Pub and Eatery, Ricky's Sports Tap, and Jack's Pub. However, I will say that of those police responses, none of them were for reported violations in regards to the sale of alcohol or violations. They were, they did have some, I guess you could say that there was some relation potentially between alcohol and what goes on there, but there was no violations for OLCC rules there. So the options for you all tonight are to make a recommendation for approval, approving each license. You can make a recommendation to approve certain licenses and not others, or recommend that we don't approve any. And I would be happy to give further explanation or answer any questions if I can.
I think it's always good just to explain what our role is in the process, since OLCC actually does the licensing, and how much weight our recommendation is given by the Oregon Liquor Control Commission, if you could speak to that.
Yeah, so there's, really, the way that we go through this process, I think we, in some ways, go above and beyond maybe what other cities do. Really, if we don't make any recommendation at all, that's essentially saying that we approve, I recommend approval. So in this case, at least we look over these things, and I think there's some accountability there that we, that people know that we're doing that and that we pay attention to these things. However, it's pretty, there is a kind of guidelines, I guess, for how, the reasons that we could deny or recommend denial of a license. And really, what applies more to us is that they have to be, has to have a history of serious and persistent problems at the location. And there's some other ones that are in there for the applicant themselves, but usually that doesn't apply for the renewal process. That would be for the, or the initial. So, and we don't have any really persistent or serious problems. We do have some responses at times, but nothing really persistent.
And I would say, if I can, just as a matter of process, if you were inclined not to or to recommend non-renewal, under our code, that requires a public hearing and notice to the proprietor before you make that recommendation.
These staff reports usually come with a recommendation from staff?
Yeah.
Do you recommend that we recommend to OLCC that they be renewed, all of them?
I do, yes.
Thanks.
Additional questions?
I don't have clear recollection, but the numbers seem to be a bit down. You know, the Main Street Pub and Eatery, I want to say it was in the 20s last time you were here, or two before. So good for them, and good for you for the involvement that each of you had. And the same is true with, with Jack's in the old days, Black Diamond.
Yeah.
A little more problematic there. Now, it hinges on suspicious person or a dog at large. But anyway, I just want to note that it seems that there's been, so I think to your point, where you're watching and checking in, they know that. They've, to the degree that it was necessary for them to sort of tighten things down a bit, it seems that they have, in at least those two instances. So good work.
Thank you.
All right. There are no other questions. I would entertain a motion for a recommendation or not to OLCC.
All right. I move to send OLCC a recommendation to renew all of the liquor licenses listed in this report.
And a second. Councilor Kerry seconds the motion by Councilor Sharmar to recommend renewal of all licenses listed. Any other discussion or questions for the lieutenant? Then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work on that. It's not easy to do.
Just think, 20 years ago, they didn't have to do that work. A whole new thing.
Because of you.
Well, we have, only half of it.
Yes, Mayor Martini.
Only the heart liquor licenses. The beer and wine wasn't before my time.
I know, right?
Actually, at the school district, I'm going to pick a time, and everybody, every kid, every staff, every, everybody, we're going to watch the World Health Organization video on washing hands. We're going to stop and sit at our desk and practice. So I've been practicing how to do this.
Happy birthday twice.
Well, yeah, but it's how you. Thank you, Suzanne Deffner, Community Development Director. And again, Councilor Kerry mentioned, this is continuing some work by our planning commission.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. This is a first reading of an ordinance to adopt legislative amendment 1905, amendments to our commercial office zone. If you'll recall, the council held a public hearing at the last meeting on February 18th. And at the close of that, the council did recommend to approve this legislative amendment and directed staff to come back with the ordinance. The planning commission also held a public hearing in February and recommended that the council approve this. And we've had several different work sessions throughout the fall to look at the language proposed and massage it and make some changes to it. So I think we have a good code revision that's proposed. If approved, this legislative amendment would allow second-story residential use as an outright permitted use, anything above that. So an upper floor above the second floor, third or fourth, would require conditional use before it could be approved. So there's basically two alternatives this evening. You can conduct the first reading of the attached ordinance or take no action on the ordinance. I did note financial implications, that the proposed amendment actually broadens the list of allowed uses in the commercial office zone. So this has a potential positive impact on the city's tax base by allowing additional development activity to occur. So you'll see that the ordinance is attached. The new language is shown in yellow highlight and red underline. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Then I will declare that this is a first reading of an ordinance adopting amendments to chapter 18 of the Monmouth Zoning and Development Ordinance relating to permitted uses in the commercial office zone, referencing legislative amendment 1905. Read by title only. We will adopt that at our next meeting. I presume that will be ready for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Before we go into executive session, as I said, we'll save those for the end. We will pause in our efforts as the Monmouth City Council, and I would like to convene a session of the Monmouth Urban Renewal Agency. And for that, you have a business agenda. So the Monmouth Urban Renewal Agency of meeting of March 3rd, 2020, is in session. And Phyllis, can you do a roll call of the board members, please? Mr. Kerry?
Here.
Mr. Lopez?
Here.
Dr. Sharmar?
Oh, here.
Counselor Sharmar?
No, I said, she did.
Mr. Schinkel?
Here.
Mr. Silbernagle?
Here.
Ms. Belts?
Here.
Ms. Koontz? Here. And any citizen comments for the Urban Renewal Agency? Seeing none, our routine business this evening consists of our consent calendar. We did have a meeting on January 21st, which was an opportunity to look at the annual report that is required by the Urban Renewal Agency. Those minutes of January 21st are attached, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I move the approval of the January 21st regular session minutes.
Second. Moved in second. And all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right. That is passed. And again, we will, later in the evening, then the Urban Renewal Agency will meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing real property transactions, help pursuant to ORS 192660E. And that will happen later. So I will temporarily pause the Urban Renewal Agency meeting and go back. I didn't allow for council comments. I apologize about that. So do we have any comments before we retire to our work session in the back? Councilor Lopez?
On, on the topic of, of the coronavirus, I wanted to call out the Oregon Health Authority website dedicated to this. It's healthoregon.org/coronavirus. It takes you directly to the Oregon Health Authority page. It'll allow you to put in your email address to receive updates of real and good information from, directly from the state. I know there's a lot of things out there floating around, and I just encourage everybody to get the best information directly from the source if possible. So once again, that is healthoregon.org/coronavirus.
They also have a number, 211, set up. And if you call 211, you can also get regular information. Again, as you said, they're really the experts. We rely on the state and Polk County Public Health Department to help us in this, and they'll, Polk County will be at the meeting tomorrow at Western as well. So thank you very much. Any other council comments?
I would quickly like to just acknowledge Russ Cooper, and he took off, but, and ODOT for working on replacing a bit of sidewalk that was on sort of the pedestrian pathway. I've talked to some of you individually about this, but, but the, on Church Street between Myrtle and 99. There was some damage done to a very short section of sidewalk, and it was become uneven and certainly not compliant. And I identified that to Russ, badgered him a bit. He then in turn badgered the ODOT people, and we got it done. So there's a nice, fresh sidewalk, nice, clear pathway for the MES kids that cross 99 to get there. So a nice job for Russ for being persistent on that.
All right. Thank you. And seeing no other comments, we will adjourn to our work session. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break.